Okay, so we're back with the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We're going to be hearing a presentation from the agency at this time.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairwoman McCray and members of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. My name is Amber Green and I'm the new Chief Equity Officer and Director of the Office of Civil Rights and Equity. And I'm officially 30 days in and I'm grateful for the opportunity to help advance equity and equal opportunity in the city as we work to eliminate inequity, inequality, and discrimination. With increased threats and rollbacks of civil and human rights across our nation, the work of this office remains critically important. And I'm pleased to present the City of Baltimore's Office of Equity and Civil Rights Fiscal Year 2026 Budget and to address any questions that you may have. I am joined today by my colleagues who will be supporting me during today's hearing. If you can please raise your hand when I introduce you. Kalen Young, Deputy Director. Lisa Kelly, Chief of Investigations. Roland Selvi, Chief Operations Officer. Akeem Kirk, Fiscal Officer. Araceli Stafford, Chief of the Wage Enforcement Division. Danielle Burton, Chief of the Community Relations Commission Division. Viola Woolums, Chief Legal Counsel for the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities. Ju Mu, Chief of the Women's and Veterans Commissions respectively. Christopher Burnett, Chief of the Equity Division. Zachary Wellman, Equity Policy Analyst. And Shruthi Srinivasan, Operations Assistant. Today, we are seeking approval for the Fiscal Year 2026 Budget of $11,206,170. Compared to Fiscal Year's 2025 Budget of $6.3 million, FY26 is an increase of $4.8 million, which is an increase of 77.4%. We'll go to slide, uh, slide one, I think. There, okay. The fiscal 2026 recommended budget includes several key changes. It eliminates two long-term vacant positions, saving nearly $145,000 annually. It also reorganizes programs and staffing across the agency, including consolidating police oversight functions under a single service, consolidating equity and inclusion activities under a single service, and agency-wide administrative functions under one service. These adjustments are cost-neutral across the agency. The budget reflects $5 million from the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund. So on slide two, you'll see our reorganization. So the Office of Equity and Civil Rights consists of five active service lines. Service 656 is the Wage Investigation and Enforcement Division, which supports the Wage Commission. Service 844 Equity and Inclusion supports the Equity Division and four commissions, which include the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, the Women's Commission, the Veterans Commission, and the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission. Service 846 includes discrimination investigations, resolutions, and conciliations, which supports the Community Relations Commission. Service 849 is the Police Community Relations, which supports the Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee. And Service 914, which is Administration, houses centralized administrative functions to provide agency-wide support. Through the fiscal year 2026 budget planning process, OECR proposed organizational restructuring. The purpose of this restructuring is to align our organizational framework with the agency's expanded responsibilities and evolving mandates. Over the last several years, the OECR has grown significantly with the expansion of the Equity Division, the Police Accountability Board, and the Administrative Charging Committee, the Women's Commission, the Veterans Commission, and most recently, the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission. The restructure proposes three major changes. Service 844 has been renamed from the Equity Office to the Equity and Inclusion to reflect the consolidation of all equity-focused activities under one service. This includes transferring the Mayor's Commission on Disability from Service 656 and establishing dedicated cost centers for the Women's Commission and Veterans Commission. Service 849 has been renamed from Police Accountability Board to Police Civilian Oversight to accurately reflect that encompasses oversight of the Police Accountability Board, Administrative Charging Committee, and the Sunsetting Civilian Review Board. Service 848 Police Community Relations has been deactivated as part of this consolidation. The creation of Service 914 Administration addresses the longstanding challenge of administrative positions being scattered across various services. This centralization includes executive oversight, budget management, human resources, strategic planning, and performance monitoring functions that support the entire agency. And the restructure simplifies our internal operations to make our budget structure more transparent and easier to understand for both internal stakeholders and the public. It improves accountability by ensuring each function is accurately resourced and positions OCR to better track, excuse me, OECR to better track, measure, and communicate our work. Now we'll go to slide three. Okay, so our fiscal overview. So as was shared earlier, our mission is to advance equity, uphold federal and civil, local, excuse me, local civil rights laws, enforce local living and prevailing wage laws, ensure access and equal opportunities for people with disabilities, and provide oversight of local law enforcement. In terms of FY26, our fiscal goals are as follows. Deepen the city's equity efforts by laying the groundwork for the citywide equity assessment, operationalizing the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission and Fund, and strengthening support for the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, Women's Commission, and Veterans Commission. Goal two is to strengthen the operational capacity of the Police Accountability Division to sustain and expand law enforcement oversight following the dissolution of the Civilian Review Board. Goal three is to expand on the success of the Wage Commission and strengthen the role and visibility of the Community Relations Commission to eliminate inequity, inequality, and discrimination, and leverage the new administrative service to enhance coordination, performance, tracking, and strategic alignment across the agency. We currently have 36 full-time staff supporting the work that we do and to edify the boards and commissions that are legislatively created and under OECR purview. We are actively recruiting and hiring to fill five vacancies, three of which are under the Police Civilian Oversight Service, including two Operations Officer four positions and Operations Officer two position. The remaining two vacancies under the administrative service include an Operations Officer two position and the CRB supervisor position, which is to be reclassified in FY26. We currently support eight boards and commissions, which are the Wage Commission, Community Relations Commission, Police Accountability Board, Administrative Charging Committee, Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, Women's Commission, and Veterans Commission. And lastly, the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission. We'll go to the next slide. So I'll walk you through some of the specific areas related to each of the divisions that we support. So slide four, which is Service 656 Wage Investigation and Enforcement. Service 656 supports the Wage Commission, which is responsible for enforcing the city's living wage laws, displaced worker protections, and prevailing wage laws for employees working on city-funded contracts. The Commission investigates complaints, conducts site visits, and ensures and issues enforcement actions, including orders for back wage payments and penalties for violations. It monitors certified payroll reports for accuracy and compliance, performs audits and data analysis of wage records, and assesses penalties where appropriate. The Commission also provides education and compliance training for contractors and workers, organizes outreach events to raise awareness of wage laws, and collaborates with other agencies to strengthen enforcement. Over the last fiscal year, we're proud to share that the OECR Wage Commission has audited more than 10,000 payroll records, resulting in 61 investigative cases. Through these efforts, we have helped 367 employees receive restitution, 361 of whom were identified through our internal audits, reflecting the strength of our proactive enforcement approach. In total, over $355,000 in back wages were recovered for workers and $226,000 in fines were collected and deposited into the city's general fund. The Wage Commission has collaborated with the Bureau of Procurement to ensure it is involved from the early stages of the procurement approval cycle. This proactive approach will prevent contract misclassifications and will ensure that employees working under the Baltimore City Construction and Service contracts are paid in accordance with the law. The FY26 recommended budget for this service is $404,348, supporting four positions. The reduction from FY25 to FY26 is reflected by the transfer of the Commission on Disabilities to Service 844, which includes moving one assistant council position. We also transferred one administrative coordinator position to the newly-created Service 914 Administration, and both positions transfers are part of the agency's restructure proposal. We'll go on to slide five. Equity and Inclusion. So Service 844 is the Equity and Inclusion Division, which supports our Equity Division and four commissions. The Commission on Disabilities, the Women's Commission, the Veterans Commission, and the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission. The FY recommended, FY26 recommended budget for this service is $5.7 million, supporting six full-time positions. This service coordinates the implementation of the city's equity assessment program established under Article I, Section 39 of the Baltimore City Code. Currently, 98% of city agencies have an equity coordinator designated, and we are actively working with the remaining few to identify an appropriate member of their team to serve in that capacity. Over the last fiscal year, we're proud to share that we've conducted monthly equity coordinator technical assistance training sessions with an average participation of over 21 city agencies for each session, as well as 18 intensive training sessions for city agency staff on several topics, including anti-discrimination, using an equity lens and policy analysis, and unconscious bias and cultural sensitivity. Additionally, 89 bills were reviewed during the Maryland General Assembly Session using an equity lens, and we made 42 submissions of written testimony. This service also includes a new collaboration with the Baltimore City Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission and Fund. And we are actively working with the members of the Commission and our state partners in the Maryland Office of the Comptroller and the Maryland Office of Social Equity to ensure that we are in full compliance with state and local laws related to overseeing the fund. The Mayor's Commission on Disabilities operates at a cost center within the Equity and Inclusion Division. The MCD works to improve the accessibility of city facilities, programs, and services for individuals with disabilities. It also conducts educational outreach to city agencies, residents, and businesses. In May 2025, OCR was proud to receive the Accessibility Champion Award from the Baltimore City Association of the Deaf for our collaborative efforts related to expanding ASL interpretation, captioning, emergency preparedness, and legislative advocacy. Additionally, the MCD responds to ADA-related inquiries and conducts in-person site visits to evaluate and advise on accessibility improvements across city operations. During the current fiscal year, MCD has responded to 75 ADA inquiries. This is already a 25% increase from FY24, with over a month remaining in FY25. The Women's Commission has received significant milestones in its second year, including hosting the inaugural Women's Commission Resource Fair, and key partnerships have emerged with the Morehead Kane Foundation on Cardiovascular Health Screening, addressing leading cause of mortality for Baltimore women, Baltimore Core on Expanding Access to Charm Care Access, and through the Carter Center founded by the late U.S. President Jimmy Carter, the Commission received a $50,000 grant funding the Inform Women, Transform Lives Program to support family caregivers. The Commission also provided legislative feedback on Maryland General Assembly Bills and also city council legislation. Looking ahead, the Women's Commission will focus on three critical areas: monitoring education funding impacts on students with disabilities and their families, recognizing that caregiving responsibilities typically fall on women, advancing Black maternal health initiatives amid threats to reproductive healthcare access, and collaborating with our other commissions to address transgender rights protections. The Women's Commission plans to release its inaugural annual report in February 2026. Last but not least, the Veterans Commission will address urgent needs arising related to the lives of veterans within our city responding to challenges from the federal budget cuts. OECR has proactively built relationships with local veteran service organizations and agencies and is coordinating with the War Memorial Commission for a 2026 Veterans Day rededication event. Once appointed, the Commission will advocate for Baltimore's veteran community and begin seeking grant funding to support its mission. The Commission will be appointed and online by the end of the summer. We'll go to slide six. Discrimination, Investigations, Resolutions, and Conciliations. That's okay, thank you. Okay. So back to here for slide six. So Service 846 supports the Community Relations Commission, guided by Article IV of the Baltimore City Code to investigate discrimination complaints in employment, housing, public accommodation, health, welfare, and education. The CRC has a recommended budget of $811,286 and four full-time positions for fiscal year 2026. The CRC launched Know Your Rights Nights this fiscal year, and the series included three key sessions on general anti-discrimination training, how to file a complaint, and the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act. Additionally, the CRC conducted a large-scale anti-discrimination training specifically for leadership teams from the Department of Transportation, Department of Public Works, and Recreation and Parks. During the fiscal year, the CRC successfully closed 20 EEOC CRC complaints and secured $135,000 in settlements for complainants. The recommended budget includes a transfer of six positions to better align staff with service priorities. The Executive Director, Operations Officer, and Fiscal Officer transfer to Service 914 Administration. Two Operations Officer positions transfer to Service 849 Police Civilian Oversight. And one research analyst transfers to Service 844 Equity and Inclusion. We'll go to slide seven. Thank you. For Police Civilian Oversight. So this service holds both the intake and adjudication of all complaints of police misconduct involving a member of the public levied against certain law enforcement agencies in the city. Key activities include intake of police misconduct complaints, the review, adjudication, and determination of discipline for officers charged with misconduct, and disseminating public reports. The PAB and ACC were created as a result of the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021. PAB and ACC funding supports salaries and other personnel costs. OECR increased staffing to the PAB and ACC in FY25, specifically hiring a complaint intake specialist, promoting a case manager to a case manager supervisor, data analyst, public relations specialist to case managers, and promote another case manager to a policy analyst. All of these efforts seek to ensure we provide the highest levels of accountability, transparency, and proactive engagement with the public. We are actively seeking a permanent chief of the division and expect to make that decision by the summer. The remaining funds are allocated towards stipends for the ACC and PAB members as well as the procurement of case management software to enhance data collection and sharing. Service 848 Police Community Relations previously supported the Civilian Review Board. As part of the agency's restructure, the six positions previously under this service were transferred. Deputy Director, CRB Supervisor to be reclassified, Operations Officer two and the Public Information Officer two to Service 914 Administration. Public Compliance Officer two, which was the chief of the Women's and Veterans Commission, to Service 844 Equity and Inclusion. And Program Compliance Officer two, the CRB Investigator, is to now the Service 849 Police Community Relations. The remaining non-personnel budget has been transferred to Service 914 Administration. The recommended budget for Service 849 Police Civilian Oversight is $2.4 million, supporting 16 full-time positions. This service is charged with supporting the operations of the Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee, including providing staffing and administrative oversight to ensure both bodies function effectively and in accordance with their mandates. Slide eight. Thank you. Service 914 represents an entirely new service created as part of our FY26 organizational restructuring. The recommended budget is $1.8 million, supporting 11 positions. This service centralizes executive, HR, financial, and strategic agency-wide functions that were previously scattered across the agency. The creation of this service enhances transparency in our budget structure, improves accountability by ensuring each function is accurately resourced, and positions OECR to better measure and communicate our work. The service now houses all agency-wide administrative functions, including executive oversight and coordination of all city services, budget development, grants and contracts management, and financial operations oversight. Human resources functions include hiring, training, and staff development, strategic planning, inter-agency collaboration and community engagement leadership, and agency-wide performance monitoring and reporting. This service brings together key administrative positions from across the agency: administrative coordinator from Service 656, HR generalist two and liaison officer one from Service 844, executive director, operations officer four, chief investigations, and fiscal officer from Service 846. Deputy Director, CRB supervisor to be reclassified, operations officer two, and public information officer two from Service 848, and executive assistant from Service 849. The significant strides made by Service 914 include an online, excuse me, streamlined recruiting and onboarding process. In response to our evolving workforce dynamics, Service 914 has also overhauled our retention, recruitment, and hiring processes, resulting in the successful onboarding of six new team members and creating additional programs related to professional growth. And last, we'll go to slide nine, which is our final slide. So as we conclude, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to everyone who contributed to this process. Your thoughtful engagement and commitment to collaboration are essential as we strive to develop a budget that reflects our collective priorities and dedication to the well-being of our community. I extend my deepest gratitude to the former OECR interim director, Lisa Kelly, for guiding the team during an extended period of transition. Deputy Director Kalen Young for leading the onboarding process to ensure that I was ready to lead on day one, now 30 days in, so sort of a vet now. Our division chiefs, fiscal officer, legislative analysts, and the many team members here in today's chambers, as well as watching online, for all of their hard work and diligence in preparing today's presentation. Your hard work both in preparation and execution has ensured that our achievements are communicated with clarity and precision, and your contributions are sincerely appreciated. At this time, we welcome questions from the council.
Thank you, Director. We're going to go straight into these questions. Council President Cohen to start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director. And let me just first thank your staff. Our former colleague, Councilmember Burnett, appreciate you. Our delegate deputy director, not to be confused with his brother, who I think also works here. And just the entire OECR staff works really, really, really hard, and we appreciate what you all do. And I'll just say, in this moment where we're feeling a lot of pressure from Washington, now is the time to double down on this work and not take our foot off the gas, but continue to accelerate and push regardless of the headwinds coming out of DC. So I appreciate you all for that. I've heard some frustration, consternation among some within our advocacy community. There's a sense that as we are doing extremely well when it comes to the violent crime fight and seeing just extraordinary reductions in homicides and non-fatal shootings, that there's a sense that we may be taking our foot off the gas a little bit when it comes to accountability. And we know that reducing violent crime and holding law enforcement fully accountable are not in contradiction with each other. They are actually linked. And fortunately, we have your whole division, and we have a police commissioner who believes that. I think that as the Civilian Review Board went away, as the PAB and the ACC have been stood up, there's a little bit of confusion about where we are on accountability for the department. And so maybe Deputy Director, if you could talk a little bit about where the agency is in the sort of longer arc of accountability, knowing that we are making significant progress when it comes to both violent crime as well as some elements of our consent decree, want to make sure for the public and for the folks who fought very hard to give us local control of the department that you are continuing to push for real accountability of all of our law enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the members of the committee, especially Chairwoman McCray, for all your leadership. As it pertains to, I think, where we are in the larger arc, I think we're in a place where we're implementing and learning at the same time. As you all know, we started a little bit behind in schedule because of some of the local control stuff and getting things stood up. And certainly, we've had, I would say, an outsized amount as compared to other jurisdictions with regard to the work that we had to take on. And so, you know, we've had growing pains and challenges that we're all privy to, but I feel very confident and really reassured, first in the work of the members of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights and in the division, you know, we have really dynamic and sharp group of people who really believe in the work and who show up every day with a really strong attitude and commitment to making sure that police accountability is done correctly. We also, you know, continue to improve and engage with our partnership with the Police Department and with all other law enforcement agencies as it pertains to just how we're working together, how we are exchanging data, how we're making sure that the processes are working well. And then lastly, as it pertains to kind of state law, we know that there were some changes that needed to be made to kind of right-size some of the timelines. As you all know as legislators, sometimes you pass a bill and you've just got to come back and tighten it up. And so, you know, some of that work was done in Annapolis this year as it pertains to the timelines and particularly when the investigations get over to us and how much time the ACC has moving forward to do their work. And so, again, as some of these changes are brought into play and as, of course, some of these growing pains raise, I've been really confident and feeling really good about just how we're able to work through those challenges and to continue to grow the work and mature the work in an appropriate way.
And Deputy Director, let me first thank you for your leadership in Annapolis as well as in Baltimore. I know that you have been actively involved in this very issue. Let me be really specific. The continued concern, I remember a year ago, in this, in budget hearings, you and I had an exchange. The concern really is about the processing time and the time it takes to review cases for the ACC. My ask then was, why is it taking so long? What are the, what are the pain points within the system? Is it BPD staffing capacity? Is it ACC not having enough support? Here we are a year later. I checked in before this hearing with several of the folks who were, who you know well, who were deeply involved in the local control fight and in doing the accountability work, and the concerns remain. So let me ask really specifically, what are we doing? What is this office doing to address the disconnect around the time it takes to process cases? How are we expediting? How are we moving more quickly and getting it done?
That's a good question. And, and so, again, it goes first and foremost to the challenge with state law. As we originally passed the bill, you had a year and a day from start to finish, and it did not bifurcate the timeline for where the Police Department would do its investigation and then the time that we would have the case or the complaint, and the ACC would do its work. In Annapolis, we passed Senate Bill 533 that goes into effect on October 1st. What that requires is that the Police Department will have 334 days to complete their investigation. And remember, under HP 670, all investigations are in the Police Department, which is different from the CRB, where an investigation could occur within the OECR. So they have 334 days starting October 1st. We've already had communications with the Police Department about that timeline and making sure that they hit the 334 days well in advance of when that goes into effect. Additionally, as we bifurcated the timeline, as was previously mentioned, originally, it was anticipated that the ACC would have 30 days to complete their work. We know that that didn't always occur because of when we got the complaint. So we bifurcated the timeline such that the ACC's timeline begins when they receive the complaint. It is 30 days, and they get an additional 30 days should they have to ask for additional review. Again, they have a subpoena power, and so they can exercise that power. And so they'll have up to 60 days to be able to do that work. And whatever the addition of those two, 394 days is the full timeline now. So instead of a year and a day, it's actually 13 months now for the full timeline for a complaint to be taken care of. So as it pertains to the timeline, I think we changed the law, and that should solve some of it. But it does require BPD to still reach that 11-month, 334-day mark. And so as long as they hit that mark, then we're going to be in good shape. But then additionally, if they don't, for whatever reason, we've also built them protection so the ACC still has more than enough time to do their work.
I appreciate that. A little bit of trust but verify here. What I'm going to ask, and I'll cede my time after this, is a committee request. Chairman Conway and I have been having some conversations about oversight in the Public Safety Committee. In advance of that, ideally within the next four weeks, I would like a one- to two-page report from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights detailing what we could do, what we need to do at the state and local level in order to improve the efficiency of the case review process. And I wanted to come from you all's office and not the Police Department because I think that it is important that you all are leading in this work. I'm going to talk to BPD. They've got their hearing coming up too. But I think it is important that it is this office that is doing that kind of analysis. So Madam Director or Deputy Director, does that timeline feel appropriate to you all?
Yes, that's fine. I think a lot of the things that we've been doing as a team, bringing on new staff to help with data requests, analyzing our systems and policies, is definitely... help with data requests, analyzing our systems and policies, is definitely in line with the work that we're currently doing. So I think that timeframe should be okay.
Okay. And are you clear on the request?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Director, Deputy Director, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Cohen. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Torrance, he has a follow-up request.
So I just have a follow-up request. I would like to, one, have a conversation with BPD too about why not embed your people in their actual investigation so you're receiving the information at the same time? That way, it is not a lag in the timelines. I know that they've done it in Chicago and LA. I think that we should do that here. That way, the information, the trust in the systems are in place that you know that the evidence that you're receiving is the actual evidence that they did receive because you don't want to go subpoena power and ask if you did not receive something that you already knew you did, you should have received. I think that may be a way to bifurcate on a local level, how we can embed our staff into BPD since we have local control and that the reporting system will be easier for us to actually get the evidence and make sure we have the holistic evidence because we don't want, we don't want an appeal that should not be appealed because not all evidence was presented to the board.
Appreciate the recommendation, thank you. Councilwoman Graham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you guys for coming in today and all the work you've done, especially on the fly in light of what's going on federally and your ability to adapt and make sure that Baltimore is still a place that is welcoming DEI because we know how important it is to have diversity, equity, and inclusion. My question is centered around Service 846. And it looks like you guys re, you guys took six positions and you deployed them in other services. But I just have to, have to ask, given the rollback of many of our federal civil rights protections grants and programs, which we know are leading to uptick in reports and complaints, and there's currently a backlog for these said investigations. With the, the moving of those six positions, how will this impact the way that you're handling these complaints and investigations, given the caseload is going up?
And this is specific to the CRC Division for Civil Rights Complaints?
Yeah, well, yes, for Service 846, which is the Discrimination Investigation Resolution, yes.
Got it. Thank you very much for the question. And I'll also make sure to allow, ask my colleague Chief Burton to see if she has additional information. There you are there. But I would say, you know, coming from, before coming to this role, I was within the federal government. So I'm very keenly aware of why this work is under threat because it is actually helping people, is actually going after the bad actors when it comes to wage enforcement, when it comes to investigating housing and employment discrimination. So our goal still remains the same and, you know, we're proud to be able to, you know, through our local laws, be able to have those processes in place. In terms of the number of staff that we have available, we have a total of four team members that are able to investigate those types of complaints. They have been working to address the cases that we receive within the federal government, but we also take cases in, from the local areas as well. So we are meeting our targets in terms of closing the number of cases that we have. We've closed all outstanding backlogs. Additional staff is everyone, I would say, you know, within a tight budget constraint, always additional staff is also helpful. But given the current fiscal state that we're in, we've been able to make sure that we are cross-training team members, using data, using systems in place to be able to attract those areas. But I'll also ask my colleague if she'd like to add an additional information.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chief Burton. Our office, we do have three full-time investigators right now, and I also do investigation as well. They carry at least 15 to 20 cases per fiscal year. So we are able to get the cases done even under what we're dealing with right now because Article 4 allows us to continue with the work regardless as to what the federal government decides when it comes to the transgender and disparate impact and other things that are going to be affected.
Okay. And the cutting of the six positions out of that service does not impact, and it's currently, it isn't impacting your work?
No, because those positions were not investigative positions.
Gotcha.
And that was also part of our reorg to make sure that everybody was clearly aligned into which specific areas.
Okay. I was a little worried about that, so thank you because, one, it's, it's great that you guys are cross-training. You want to make sure that everyone can do not everything, but most things. So that was reassuring, but also finding out that the four people that are actually doing the investigations, that that's gone untouched. So I thank you for that. And then my, my last question centers around the same service. With the federal government terminating 78 critical grants used to fight housing discrimination and reversing course on prosecuting race discrimination cases involving Black and Latino people, how is, how is your office addressing the potential increase in housing discrimination complaints?
I'm going to ask Chief Burton if she would add in.
Well, when it comes to housing, we're still able to enforce our fair housing laws under Article 4. So even though the feds are not necessarily funding, we don't receive any money on that end from the feds when it comes to fair housing. We do this all through the general fund. So we're, we're okay when it comes down to the fair housing and we're still able to enforce and do what we need to do and do our community outreach and ensure that people are receiving what they're supposed to when it comes to fair housing.
Thank you for those answers and thank you for your time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to meet you, Director. I think this is the first time we had the opportunity to meet and I'm really excited to have you on board. The work that your office does is incredibly important, I think, to, to the, to the President's phrasing, to, I think, the stability of the city, certainly the relationship between our Police Department and the community, which has been fractured for a very long time and I think is starting to show maybe some significant progress, but we're still not quite there. I'll say particularly for this office, there's been a lot of change, a lot of change in leadership. And so I'm really looking forward to your leadership on this issue. This council passed, or the previous council passed, a number of laws that are really, really important toward the work that you'll be doing, of course, around local control and, of course, around the Police Accountability Board. And the, the President has talked a little bit about some of the work that we've been trying to do around supporting you guys and making sure that you have the proper resources. I'm curious, sort of looking at the budget here and looking at the backlog, do we have a sense of the workflow for the ACC and how things are moving forward? Is it going well, to your understanding? Are they overwhelmed? I think we're probably going to say yes. And to what end? Can you say we can be helpful as partners in making sure that the PAB and ACC are successful in cultivating a trusting relationship between the community and our Police Department?
Sure. I'll just share some top lines and I'll also just ask if my colleagues, if they can share a little bit more about their specific expertise related to here. But I would say we're very thankful for our ACC members. Every Friday, they are reviewing cases and taking the time and doing the very hard work of making decisions that impact public trust and accountability in those spaces. So for us, we're very proud of the relationship that we have with our, not only our ACC members, but also our PAB team as well. I meet with them regularly, our teams meet with them regularly to understand if there are issues that we need to address and, you know, issues that we may need to take back to the Police Department as well to ensure that they have what they need. But overall, I think the work that they're doing is definitely helping to repair a lot of the harms that we've seen historically that have occurred in Baltimore City. But specifically, I'll just also ask my colleagues if there are any other things that they'd like to share, specifically Deputy Young and Chief Kelly.
Good afternoon. Lisa Kelly, Chief of Investigations. I've been leading the work of the Police Accountability Division for a couple of months, so I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak to it. So I would just add to Director Green's comments that the OECD supports the Administrative Charging Committee in a variety of ways, by preparing board minutes and agendas, case summaries, organizing and prioritizing case reviews, coordinating committees' access to BWC and investigation documentation, providing policy review and communicating on behalf and with the board and subject to the law enforcement agencies. So we really do support them and any other duties that's needed to ensure the effective and efficient administrative review of those investigations.
Thank you. And I'll just add one final point, just with respect to local control, that will also allow this body to ensure that there are any, you know, legislative issues that we need to address specifically with BPD.
I appreciate it. I think the other, the other way that I've sort of seen the PAB and ACC has been, we have this board that advises us on that police and community relationship and also the ACC that helps us determine when folks have overstepped their, the boundaries of an authority. And then it's always been OECD's responsibility to support in those efforts and make sure that they have the resources and backup and support necessary in order to be effective. I'm curious to that effect, how, how much does the board weigh in on the budget? Or, we'll start there, how much, how much interaction do they have with the budget? Do we share the sort of financial considerations with the board?
So my understanding is that answer is no, but I'm going to also just defer to my deputy as his expertise in this area.
So we don't consult with them per se when it comes to the actual structuring of the budget. That being said, you know, I think the legislation does require when it comes to staffing that we work in consultation with them. And so that includes having conversations with them, that includes them serving on panels as we, for instance, looked at our previous Police Accountability Chief role. When we had a candidate that we were trying to bring in, they were a part of the process, they are part of the current process as we continue that work. But as it pertains to, you know, some of the things that they may want to spend money on, they have spoken to us and we are in engagement with them about what that looks like. So for instance, the Nicole Conference is one example I can come off the top of my head and mention. It's something that in the past we weren't able to support because of the way the budget timeline worked, but since then, we have been able to support. And there are other examples that I just can't come off the top of my head and think of. But I would say that that has improved in a significant way.
Yeah, I think part of the reason I pose the question that way is because I do see in many ways the responsibility of OECD is to support that board so that they are truly effective. Of course, you know, they don't control the budget, they're not a city agency necessarily. But you guys are that conduit between city funds and fiscal responsibility and the things that that board needs in order to be cutting-edge and truly effective in their work. So, you know, I, I, once again, I want to see that board succeed, I want to see the ACC succeed. If they need additional investigators, we certainly need to be having that conversation if it has not already been had in this, for this budget and in this budget. And I think, I want to add to the request that the President brought up earlier about the two-page report for any considerations we need at the state or local level. I want the board to be a part of that conversation, that's why they exist. You know, the ACC and, you know, the folks that serve on it from the board, they're doing the work and so they have some sense of those considerations. I'm sure you guys would consult them anyway, but let's not presume and not just ask directly that they be included in that consideration.
I would say absolutely, and I know that the PAB is working on a forthcoming report that should summarize a lot of the work that they've been doing as a team to put together additional recommendations. So we definitely look forward to the report as well as, you know, what we can share.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director. Can you talk about your priorities for the Veterans Commission?
Absolutely. And I'll also ask Chief Muth to also share the additional things that she would like to as well. But in terms of the Veterans Commission, that was one of the first topics that was brought, that we have this commission, we don't have members assigned to it yet. I know that you are appointed a member of the commission, correct? And so our goal is to work with the mayor's office to get the members of the community appointed by the summertime so we can make sure that we have that work. But even in the, in the absence of having commission meetings, Chief Muth and others have been doing a tremendous job of doing outreach and engaging with the veterans community, specifically when we have a lot of the federal cuts and threats that have been impacting a large portion of our community here in Baltimore City. So for me, it's an area that is a definite area of opportunity, but it's a key priority area because there is a lot of things that veterans contribute to our community, but as well as there are also specific needs that they need to be addressed. And so we're looking forward to bringing that commission online. But I'll also ask Chief Muth that there's anything that she'd like to add as well.
Thank you so much. Jill Muth, Chief of the Veterans Commission. In terms of priorities, there is a few things that we're tracking that we are going to bring to the commission once appointed to begin to focus on. First of all, being veterans' employment. Veterans make up 30% of the federal workforce, which is facing heavy cuts and layoffs, especially in Maryland and Baltimore City. They are the most heavily impacted in terms of those layoffs. There has been some exciting work being done in Baltimore County to sort of respond to that. So we want to kind of look at what they're doing and learn some lessons there. Additionally, the funding cuts are going to create gaps in service and longer wait times for necessary service, which were already strained prior to those funding cuts, such as healthcare, housing, mental health, and suicide prevention services. So we want to be aware of what the gaps are, what local resources we may have to fill those gaps, and where additional resources are needed. We are also aware that veterans are actually a category of DEI, so threats to DEI is also threats to veteran inclusion. So we want to track that impact and see where we can meet it. And then finally, there is certainly concern about the well-being of veterans from marginalized identity groups, including Black, Brown, immigrant, LGBTQ, and women veterans. So we want to focus on that and see where the gaps are and, you know, creative problem solve and leverage the resources we have to fill those gaps.
Tyler Fornella, Deputy Director for Local Affairs in the Mayor's Office. And just to add a little bit more context there, Councilman, we actually do have now all of the five candidates that we will, will forward for the Veterans Commission combined, they have about 70 years' worth of military service across the group. We, we really want to be intent, wanted to be intentional about the appointments that we will be making there, so to make sure that we have representation of women, some younger service members, right, and serving across the different branches of our armed forces. I'm really proud of the group that we were able to put together and we were going to be introducing them at the June 9th meeting, but that meeting isn't happening anymore. So at the next council meeting, we will be introducing the executive nominations for the Veterans Commission.
That's pretty, and Chief Muth, would you add something to that?
So if I could share one more thing, the last point I wanted to mention is that I think primarily the focus is that there is this crisis with funding and services and availability for veterans. So there is need to attention, need for attention to that. But in addition, looking forward to the future, we want to make Baltimore City a place that is attractive for veterans to live, work, and play here, a place where veterans can really thrive because of the contribution that veterans can make in developing healthy communities and just being a part of a better, brighter Baltimore City. So it's a little bit of a survival moment, but we're hoping to get to that thrive moment as well.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. And I, I think you beat me to the punch on it. I think what we're seeing with the, the undercutting of the veteran community from President Trump's administration is, is very serious and needs to be addressed, but I'm really glad to hear there's also, we have to remember that we have 26,000 veterans in the city and giving them opportunities to serve after service and just forming, helping form connective tissue and helping them, you know, giving people the opportunity, veterans, to contribute to the city in so many meaningful ways is, is the, maybe the proactive piece of this that we, we certainly need to keep in mind. And I'm looking forward to, to working with the commission since it's going to be getting up and running soon. Thank you.
And thank you for serving as well. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first just want to thank Director, but also Mayor Scott himself and the administration. I mean, we could have backed down and we did not. Equity is in our charter and it's going to stay. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights is here and it's going to stay. And that's a testament to the leadership of the administration, but also I want to give credit to my colleagues who are backing that up. So just to be like super bold about the fact that we are intentionally doubling down on our diversity and equity and that- on our diversity and equity, and that is an important statement, I think, not just for our city, but as a leader for the rest of the US, that we are not going to back down. So your work is actually more important than ever as a result of that, but also just the continued work that we need to, in terms of equity in our city. So please pass that, I'm sure, hopefully the mayor's listening, but if he's not, please pass that along. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the work on equity in each agency, and my, our colleague, I'm sure it's interesting being on the other side, what, it seemed to me that each, you know, we do know that every agency has an equity officer, and that they're working towards equity, not just within their agency, but how, my question is, how are you working to make sure it's all interconnected relative to the entire city? So we work, for instance, we talk about equitable development, making sure that we're making those really important key investments in areas that have been ignored for so long. That's intentional equitable work, but also making sure that, you know, we've got digital equity, and we've got, you know, our 3-1-1 is by nature not equitable, so, you know, how, how is your office going to make sure and continuing to make sure that when we talk about equity, we're being very consistent across the board in terms of city services and the work that we're doing?
I'll just, you know, give sort of a top line. So my job previously before joining Baltimore City was, I was in charge of equity implementation across our entire federal government. So within each of the twenty-three cabinet, I know I haven't met everybody, so a little bit about my background. So all across those twenty-three cabinet agencies, I was the person responsible for ensuring that each agency was meeting those specific goals and figuring out where they were connective tissue. And so with the work that Chief Burnett is leading, you know, we're able to take some of the, you know, the work and experience that I've had and the work that he's been building with his team to try to figure out how to do this, you know, quicker. You know, that's really, you know, I'm a very results-driven person, I think the team knows that now, thirty days in, but we want to make sure that we have a united message. So we're really thinking through what are the areas that are areas of opportunity, but are common threats by each of the districts. And I think we'll definitely look to working with you all to help educate us about what are some of the other things that we may not be seeing in the data that we're collecting that we may need to. But I'll turn it over to Chief Burnett to.
And just on that point, there's equity within our districts. Like I have a very split, very diverse district. So equity within our district is different than within the city. And so how are we juggling those two things as well? So you can add that to it.
Thank you, Madam Councilmember, and members of the committee. It's good to be back. And I share the concern. And so the first thing is, we've been building a very intentional community of equity coordinators, as you heard from Director Green. Ninety-eight percent of our agencies have an equity coordinator. And one of the first things I did when I came over to the Office of Civil Rights was try to get it to one hundred percent, and we're still working. Obviously, transition happens within agencies, and so we're actively working with the administration to make sure that if we don't have a coordinator in every agency, that we're still in constant and frequent communication with agency leadership, or working with our partners in MOGR to make sure that the messages are still getting across. But we have monthly equity coordinator meetings, and so every single month, we have, we provide training, technical assistance. One of the things that we launched immediately in reviewing the equity assessments that have been deployed since fiscal year twenty-one was, in reviewing though, so when I came over, I was sort of drinking through a fire hose, but started reviewing assessments from twenty-one to twenty-four, and sort of seeing where there were trends. And one of those things was a need for more technical assistance, written materials, and so worked with my team to build out a toolkit and library. And so we now have a online library for equity coordinators to view online trainings, review materials, to sort of be able to continue to grow and lean into their craft. We also have a equity trainer on staff that provides intensive training for agency leadership. In the last fiscal year, we did eighteen intensive training sessions for city agencies, and those topics include anti-discrimination training. One of the first trainings, unsurprisingly, that I helped write was how to use equity lens and policy analysis, and that's not just public policy, but that's agency policy. But we're also looking at, you know, hiring and using unconscious bias, cultural sensitivity. And the goal is that all of this sort of should transmit across their work. And all of the equity coordinators are direct reports to agency leadership. And so we want the work to permeate through all of the decisions that they're making, and we're digging in deeper. And so we have started to work with agencies on their internal equity plans. And so we're in the process, working with a few agencies to do deeper dives into their equity plans, that, you know, a few are new, some don't have them, but we're really going deep. And I'm really excited to work with Director Green, because he's done this at the national level and worked across the country in this work. And so the goal is that we want this to be at the forefront, whether it's working with the Department of Housing or DBW and all of their decisions, we want that to sort of be infused along the work, along the way. And then we're really excited. I mean, one of the things that was in the budget this year is to try and roll out the Baltimore Citywide Equity Action Plan. On May twenty-ninth, we, an RFI went out to try and expand a, and deploy a citywide equity action plan, citywide, which will have a tremendous amount of public engagement along the way. And so we'll be leaning on all of you, once that plan goes live, to get as much community engagement and input along the way, so that all of this work is sort of informed our work. So Director Green, you want to add more?
Sure. Thank you for that. And I'm just building upon what was shared. It's another reason why we need to make sure that we are funding the equity assessment, so that we can make sure that this equity analysis is done in a consistent way, and you can build upon it year by year, so you're able to see and actually track data and trends. You know, oftentimes, you know, people would say, you know, equity for me is more of a change management process. When you're thinking about designing systems, it's not just like this, you do this one year and it's done. It's a consistent muscle that you have to build in, and so the equity assessment will definitely help us establish a baseline of where we need to go and have those key measurements there as well. And then also just using, you know, census data, as well as data that's aggregated from other agencies as well, to understand where there's gaps and opportunities. So those are the main areas. I mean, we were excited, I'm excited about this work. I think us being able, as a city, to be able to lean in is really important at this moment.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for your question. Thank you, Director Green and team, for joining us. We are going to recess briefly, and then we will be back with Mima.
Okay. Thank you all so much.